Make sure we're ready. We have -- as long as we're ready, I'd like to welcome everyone to the first city council meeting in our Government Services Building, although it's an X. The first time we've had a city council meeting not at the old City Hall for decades. So if you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation which will be brought by Councilman Collins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray. Father, we come to you again, we ask for your presence among us, and I ask that you just guide us. Father, there's a lot of things going on in this city, and we do recognize you blessed us with growth, and we're leaning forward in the foxhole here, and we ask that you just be with us. And we recognize you are leading us and guiding us. So help us as we make these decisions. Father, I also thank you at this time of the year for graduates. They're looking forward to the summer and for rest, and then help them, give them that rest, and bless them through this summer, and get ready for the next year. And then those from colleges or universities that are going on to new careers, be with them, march over them. Father, we thank you, and we ask for your blessing, in Christ's name.
Moving along to our city council meeting agenda, the first item on tonight's agenda, are items that are not on the agenda tonight, as citizens' opportunities to speak about items not on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to stand and take the podium, you're welcome to state your name and address and address this city council.
Sorry to hear about the issues you had at the other place. My name is Heidi Brenner, 13930 Woodin Road, and I was here about a month ago, out in the venue to the west of me. I know we don't have a microphone, so you can't hear me. The tenant speaks off, so you can't hear me. This has to do with the venue next door that's directly to the west of my property that I spoke about with the issues that we've been having as far as noise and the neighbors. I spoke with Rachel, the city, whatever she is, which was -- all she did was tell me that there was nothing they were doing wrong because -- and I don't know if this is going to come and talk to you guys, but she said there was nothing in that special use permit that had anything to do about the noise issue, the traffic issue, any of the concerns that now I know you guys, I saw you guys at the meetings, I know you guys heard. Now, the issue with the special use permit is, how many of you guys saw the special use permit and signed it?
No one signed it.
Okay, but you guys all saw the special use permit. Who is it that draws that up? What we need to do is to get to the bottom of why none of the concerns of the residents were mentioned apparently in that special use permit. And I'd like to come two weeks from now, I'd like to come back and see if I can, we'd like to see if we can get a copy of that special use permit to see for ourselves. But for some reason, some unknown reason to all of us, none of those issues were mentioned in that special use permit. So of course, the owners aren't addressing their concerns, because they don't have it. And like Rachel said, well, they're complying with everything, because there was nothing really that they hadn't complied with, except I think in time, which, I mean, my gosh, the time is not the issue. So what we'd like to do, and Mickey, unfortunately Mickey helped us out, is out of town right now, or could be here too. So again, the concern that we have is that we can hear, I can hear that music in my home, with the windows closed until 11:30 at night. Now, he spoke to the owner, and I apologize, I don't know their name, and I don't know their address. They're the home that's right at the corner, the southwest corner of 142nd Street in Woodin. And he was speaking with them, I guess they had a yard sale or something in the time of the weekend. And they, they can hear in their home too, and they thought it was coming from the high school. And so, the two of us that are directly there have to listen to this music. I've had a couple of people that have actually gone to the event that I've talked to, gone to events that I've talked to, and they said there's absolutely no soundproofing, it's just, I mean, it's a tin can buttoned building, for all intents and purposes, is what they put up. I mean, it was constructed in about a week and a half, and he said you can't even hear yourselves think in that building, it's so poorly constructed. So what we'd like to do is, we'd like to see a copy of that special use permit, we'd like to see questions as to why none of the special traffic issues and the noise issues, they agreed to the fact that that venue would be self-contained, that the noise would be self-contained within that venue. None of that was put in or addressed in the special use permit according to Rachel. Now, I have to say, I have not seen it yet, but I have reason to believe that she would not be telling me, that you think we're not in there. So again, it's why the owners are not making any effort whatsoever, and they had an event there Saturday night, which, and they do there pretty much every Saturday, there's a busload of kids that, I'm thinking maybe it was a graduation or something, but, you know, it came right down Woodin Road, and they're making no effort whatsoever to steer even busloads of people to use, and instructing them to use 142nd Street. And there's absolutely, they used to have a sign to leave the venue that said right turn only, that sign is down, I mean, that's, there's no sign up there anymore. There's never been a security guard, that was part of their agreement, that they would have a security guard out there, telling people to turn right to go down 142nd Street there. And I, I mean, now I'm getting to the point where I'm gonna have, I'm just gonna start calling the police, which I hate to use the police resources for something like noise and everything every Saturday evening. But, I mean, I don't know, I honestly don't know what else to do. We tried to be good neighbors, as I expressed before. You know, I let them use my water before, it was, they had water, and of course, they said, yeah, I'll pay for it, and I would not have taken any money for it. But, you know, just to not even come and say, hey, what do I owe you, or thanks for letting me use your water, or, you know, using my big tractor as mine to help move dirt with this trap. And if as soon as, as soon as they left this place, as soon as they got what they wanted from you guys, they're done. I mean, it's history. And according to Rachel, I guess that special use permit, it just continues, it's not, we were told at the meeting, and maybe I misunderstood that, that it was either renewable or if they didn't pay attention or adhere to the rules, or not the rules, but the stipulations that were in that special use, then it could be pulled. Well, of course, they don't care about that, because apparently there's nothing, there's no stipulations, no anything in the special use permit. So that's a mess. It is two weeks from now, if we can come back and see a copy of the special use permit, if we could get some, now I know the city, the city planner guy, Don Sloan has retired, and so I know that was probably his last hurrah, was to get this thing through. And, but, but we would like some answers as to why none of the concerns were addressed in that special use permit.
Heidi, you mentioned you had some friends or acquaintances that went to the meeting, to that thing.
Yeah, they left, he left, because he couldn't hear himself.
Okay, now, you were saying acoustics. I think all of us at some point or another have been in those environments, regardless of what it was, a wedding reception, a graduation and stuff. And it's been, at least my observation, that the sound and the person, the DJ or however it's being done, is not controlling the volume, because we've been, you know, my wife and I, and I agree, that it's not something that's enjoyable when you can't talk with other people.
Right.
But you were using the acoustics because that's because of the building, as you called it, kind of, anyway.
Right, the building, yeah, yeah.
And I'm wondering if there's any correlation there between there not being any limits on the, on the, on the volume?
I'm sure there was a correlation. Our understanding was that that, sorry, please continue. Our understanding was that all noise was to be self-contained within the venue, particularly the music and the sound. They say there were going to be some weddings outside in the weeds and the surrounding tree, which, you know, I mean, there's going to be some noise there, but, and they have little outdoor canteos, of course, there's many, but they said all the noise and music and everything is going to be self-contained within that venue, and it is absolutely not. And they had to know going into it, and they're supposed to be, one of the owners was also supposed to be on-site during the event. And either there is no owner on-site that's making sure that you can't hear the noise, or they just don't care. And I happily, they don't care because they don't have it, because there is nothing that you guys aren't going to come to them and say, hey, you're, you're, you're too noisy. And they say, well, show us in the special permit where it says we have to control the noise. And so, you know, I mean, they're business men, they knew that, I mean, they knew that it wasn't in there, and they weren't going to take it to the rules. But, I mean, that's not being neighborly, and that is not, they assured us all that the integrity of our little rural area would be preserved, which is why we live there. I mean, we could live in Johnson County, I could live anywhere in Johnson County that I wanted, but I don't, I love my land, I love my people's height. I love, like, the fact that my mom, my 91-year-old mom comes over, and I'm very cat-seared. And I came home on Saturday night before April 15th, dead from about 8:30, I come to the office, wanted to go to bed, but I was going to have to get up at 5:00 in the morning to go back to the office Sunday morning, and I couldn't go to, I couldn't even go to sleep, because that boom, 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 the pounding, you know, of the bass, that just, it just reverberates. And they're just, I hate to see all of us, you guys included, being taken advantage. I just don't think that's right, because we're a great city, and I love this city. When Bill, when I moved down here from Italian, California, and got married, I mean, it's just a great place to live, and I just, I hate to see us being taken care of. We want to be good neighbors, we try to be good neighbors, but, anyway, I'm taking it all the time.
Can I ask you a quick question? When you spoke at the last meeting, I think the intent was, the staff's going to try to get you in communication with the owners, because you were having a problem. Did that ever occur?
Yes. I haven't been able to call him, because I'm just, I'm so upset that I just, I want to see what the, I don't feel like I have, maybe ammunition's not the right word, but I would prefer to see the special use permit first, I would prefer to see why it was written such that it was written, why there were no stipulations in there, and get a little more background with you guys, because they know, I mean, they know the noise is an issue, they know the traffic is an issue.
Special use permit, it's a matter of public record, so that, you should be able to see a copy.
So I can just go on, you got the, the website?
Yeah, in fact, I think they're on the website, they're in the planning department. I think also with the last agenda, agenda prior to that, you also put a copy of it in there for my request, wanted to see it. I think you attached, so you couldn't go on to the city council agenda for?
Do you know what, I don't know the date, that that was minutes would, I don't know what, I mean, I know where the minutes are, because I've seen the minutes, but is there a particular?
I think it was the first meeting in April, I believe, where you attached the, I think the?
That was the city council meeting, yeah. Oh, the one that I attended?
Well, if you're at the, well, if they go the meeting after that, they put it, they had it as part of that packet, which is online.
Okay.
They may have put a copy of the special use permit as part, to be viewed there as well.
Okay, I'll go on there, yeah, I think that was probably April 15 to 14.
Hey, you guys offered to buy them out?
Did I offer to buy them out?
Yeah, in all seriousness, have you guys thought out or thought to offer to buy them out?
Oh, no, no, I'm out of plan.
Yeah.
I mean, it had, had the original, that was originally zoned for an SFE, you know, which, yeah, which fell through the cracks, and I had talked to them, they were a very, very nice young couple, and they said that it was too expensive to build one residence, which I wish they would have let us know, because Sean, you guys know Sean, I mean, that's his business, he's into construction, and he would have seen to it that he could have built them a house that they would have been able to afford, and just to keep that area in there. But, yeah, I mean, I don't know how much they put into that so far, but I, and I, and you know, to be told, I mean, a venue is not exactly, I don't love having one next door, but compared to having what, originally civil or?
It's supposed to be 16, any apartments wouldn't have?
Yeah, it was going to be a lot of, which we knew that wasn't going to fly either, because the guy was a paper sewer, I mean, we tried to tell him that in the beginning. Anyway, that's another story. And so, I mean, that's why we try to be good neighbors, because we thought this will only be, there'll be traffic around there maybe one evening a week for half the year, and we can deal with that, and?
If you go back to the April 8th council meeting agenda, that special use permit is attached, the city manager's report is the final attachment.
Okay.
So you can read it.
I will certainly do that. And then we just need to find out why it was that none of, that none of the concerns were put into them, and who wrote that, my concerns?
Yeah, it's got all the signatures and all the notes for the meetings and everything attached.
Okay, great. Well, anyway, thank you, guys, and I'll throw you back in a couple weeks, see what we can, we can do, because, I mean, we really do want to work with them. We know it's not going anywhere, I don't like going nowhere, but we just feel like we're all being taken advantage of, you know, I need that. I really don't have a lot of patience with being taken advantage of.
I appreciate that. Thank you for coming back and expressing your concerns again. Like Councilman Stevens said, I think it's a good idea to start a, opening up a dialogue between both of you, and giving you this information, I think will prepare you to be able to talk with them, and hopefully remedy some of these concerns that you have.
Yeah, because he won't answer any of my texts, and I know why he won't answer any of my texts, because then that's legally dollarsing that he's receiving. Right now, he can say, oh, I never got it, you know, so, I, I mean, I probably?
Heidi, you also mentioned, and I don't know if it was personal observation or what, that there was nobody, security outside and owners on the premises. Do you know that, do you know that for a fact? Is that a personal observation or assumption?
Personal observation is that I've never seen anybody walk in the parking lot or being posted at the exit, to me, so that is personal observation.
Okay, you said the sign?
The sign is gone. There used to be one at center, right, to go down to, and then there was supposed to be somebody making them do that, that was stipulated at the meeting.
Okay, that's a certain?
Those are gone. Now, as far as an owner being on-site, I'm trying to be positive in saying there's nobody there, because I hate to think that there was an owner there and they just didn't care about it. You know, I mean, I'm kind of trying to give them the benefit of the doubt by saying, well, we're not there, so.
It's been, sometime since I reviewed that special use permit, I know there's legal specifications on what can be in a special use permit, I don't know who generated it, would imagine, our planning department, who at that time, I don't know. But those are good concerns, and those need to be addressed and looked at, educated both sides to what the requirements are. Special use permits usually stay with the property and are not, and when a property changes hands. Other than that, I think there's some contingents, as I recall, for violations of certain sections, but I'd have to research it myself, and I'd refer you to the special use permit and then reach out to the?
And that is the problem, is that there's no violations, because there's nothing in, and I have?
I don't know that that's the case.
Well, I was going to say, I might add one more thing, too, if the staff is able to give you the date of when that planning commission meeting took place, because special use permits come through the planning commission, that's when the hearing just takes place. You can see what the comments are, not only of the public, but also of the commission members.
Yeah, I just hope there was, I just hope there was?
Oh, is it all, okay, I think it was a catch, okay.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is that there's nothing in the special use, and I also have the benefit of the firm that I work for, we do city audits, we do a couple of city audits here in Kansas, and do a couple of government cities, and so I'm very familiar with the way special use permits and the way commissions and the way funds and all kinds of things. So it's kind of interesting, you have a meeting before we can be here. And so I have the benefit of knowing some city clerks and being able to discuss them with them, special use permits, and so I feel like that was very beneficial to me to know, and to know that we can resolve this issue, because it can be resolved. And so that everybody, if not completely happy, my, my 93-year-old aunt, that's the nun comes in July, she'll be able to sleep. Or, or I can tell those people, because you don't want a nun to be stopped. Thank you, guys, thank you very much.
Anyone else that'd like to address the city council? Seeing none, we move along to the consent agenda. The consent agenda will include the minutes of the April 22nd meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, the first quarter 2019 financial report, and the HUD 2019 Public Housing Authority income limits. Is there anything to be pulled by the staff, citizens, questions or concerns from the council, and entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, would you accept the consent agenda as a nominee?
Second. Moved and seconded, vote please.
Wood? Wood, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good, thank you. And moving right along to the regular meeting agenda, the first item is wastewater master plan acceptance, I believe we're going to table that until after the presentation, and move right, I'll take a motion to table that, and entertain a motion to table item number one.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to table item number one of the regular meeting agenda.
Second. Do we have to state them in?
Table move to the next.
Okay. Very good. Moved and seconded, no concerns, vote please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number two, which is the wastewater master plan acceptance, which, it's the water, I'm sorry, water master plan acceptance, number two.
Yes, we're also going to table this one.
No, no.
We're going to move on to this one?
We're going to ask for a staff presentation to write now.
Good evening, Craig Ebert, Public Works Director. This will be a very short presentation, you just spent an hour, I guess, getting pretty good, pretty good flavor for the actual master plan and what's in it related to the water in the business. So with that, the staff recommends that you go ahead and do a formal acceptance of the master plan, and entertain a questions, if you have it at this point.
Thank you very much.
I'm sure we're going to be talking a lot more about this.
Yeah, when we ask for money. Thank you very much. Anything else to add by staff, citizens? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept any water master plan. Moved and seconded, have questions, concerns, comments, we'll start down here.
No, I'm too bad we didn't have a lot of public here to hear, because it's going to come, we're going to have to make some hard decisions coming up in a few months, and I've seen all this.
Lots of work goes into that. How thick was that? 200 inches? Yeah, that's pretty thick. Anything else?
We left it with Tommy.
Nothing else? A vote please?
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anybody who's not thirsty before that, just thirsty now. Onto item number three, the ordinance to authorize the issuance of approximately $9,980 for general obligation bond series 2019. That's a pretty good.
Mayor and Council, Tilly, the plant finance director, we sold the bonds this morning, and David Artaberry, our financial advisor, is going to explain the sale and amount, and we also have Adrian Serene and Tyler Elworth with our bond counsel, if we have any questions for them.
Good evening, Dave Artaberry, the Church of King Von, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Before I get into the results of the sale, I do really want to quickly mention the rating that the city went through, and I think you have in your agenda packages a copy of the rating report. It's always kind of good to go through, I think, and look at that, and spend a few minutes, if you've got time, to see how sort of the third-party agency views your finances, and I'm pleased to report, as in the past, they view it very positively. They point, in their sort of recap, they point to you as having a strong or very strong management, budgetary flexibility and budgetary performance, and very strong liquidity. And what I think is really nice about those items is that in terms of their valuation of credit, those are the things that you, as a governing body and staff, have direct control over. So they rank the things that you have direct control over very, very, very well. They also sort of, on the other side, things that they look to probably be things that maybe you could improve upon a little bit, things that maybe are holding your rating back from being higher than it already is, is things like, they point to your, your wealth and income levels, your, your assessed value per capita, as well as your income levels are a little bit below the national average. So that's something that they sort of view as not as favorable. They also point to your debt levels, which I think particularly with the addition of the building projects, they view your debt levels as starting to rise a little bit, and that is somewhat common for communities that are in growing areas, is to have their debt levels rise as they build up the infrastructure for the, for the growth.
I've got a question for the, on the debt level, the debt level of what? Like, I know like the common term for real system is like ETI, but what are we, a level against what?
What they look at, they particularly cited debt service carrying charges, in other words, your annual payment as a percentage of your overall expenditures. They said that that was about 7.2%, which they consider to be a little bit high. And then they also look at your total debt as a percent of total governmental revenue. So they're looking at both your annual payments as a percentage of your budget, as well as your total debt as a percentage of your budget.
Okay, so it's essentially income as well?
Yeah, yeah, both of those ways. But overall, though, the result was very positive. Your rating was confirmed at a double A minus level, which is a very, very good rating, and that's, you know, taking into account the fact that you'll be issuing a very significant amount of debt for the new building projects. So it was a really good report, and that sort of culminated in what I think was, again, a very good bidding response that we got today. We set the bid deadline at 11 o'clock today, so we met down here in this room, probably about 10:30 or so, and got set up, and we're monitoring all of the bids as they come on, the bids appear on an internet bidding site called a parody bidding site, and we monitored the bids, and at 11 o'clock, they were all received, and the results, I think you've got a copy of them here in front of you, you've got a total of seven bids. The bids range from 2.743692% submitted by Robert W. Baird, to a little over 2.93% submitted by SunTrust. And you look there, and all the bids are really, particularly the first three bids are really grouped in closely together, which tells you you got some really good aggressive bidding on it. The best bid was submitted by Robert W. Baird, and that's their true interest percentage rate there, the 2.7 through 6%. Robert W. Baird usually doesn't submit their bid alone, usually they have other banks that join in with them to help distribute the bonds. In this case, I'm pretty sure, although I can't confirm it, I'm pretty sure their syndicate included a lot of local banks that are big purchasers of bonds, like UMB and Country Club Bank and Commerce Bank, so I'm guessing that all of those were involved in the distribution of your, your bonds. So the bids were received, after we got the bids, we verified that they're mathematically correct, and that they met all the bidding parameters, and then, actually, because of the way that they structured and they submitted their bid, they actually bid with a premium, which we didn't need that premium in sizing the bond issue, so, I'm sorry, we didn't need that premium to help fund the project costs. So what we did is we reduced the size of the bond issue from $9,980 down to, the final principal bond was $9,320. You'll still have all the money that we anticipated for, for this phase of building, building projects, as well as the refinancing that we did, but it just, we were able to do that with a little bit smaller bond issue because of the way they constructed their bid. The refinancing I just mentioned involved paying off early your 2011 bond issue, and as a result of doing that, we were able to, the city's going to be able to realize about $237,500 in savings by refinancing those older bonds at a lower rate. And as a result of doing that, we were able to, the city's going to be able to realize about $237,500 in savings by refinancing those older bonds at a lower interest rate. In addition to that, the remaining bond proceeds, about $5,840,000 will be available to pay for the building projects. Again, our plan is that that money will last hopefully until sometime early next year. At that time, you'll have a better idea what the final project cost would be. And at that time, we would do the second phase of borrowing to complete financing for the building projects. But the rates on these bonds are quite a bit lower than what we had been anticipating in some of our mill levy projections. So hopefully that means ultimately after that next block phase of borrowing is done, it's going to result in a lower payment and a lower mill levy than was originally anticipated.
I've got a question. The question on the issuance, why didn't we accept with full amount? You said the premium. Is that premium meaning we could have accepted that amount?
Well, the reason you could have accepted the premium that they gave us, they did with a premium of about $500,000. If we had accepted that premium, the principal amount of the bonds would have been $9,980,000 and the premium would have put us then to the total amount of proceeds that you would have received, about $10.5 million.
Okay.
The problem with doing that is if we go-
We'd be over 10.
Yeah, exactly. We lose what we call the bank qualified status of the bonds and we don't get quite as good of an interest rate. Yeah, that's a good question.
Great.
Covered a lot of ground there.
Yes, thank you. Some of the important factors were the savings that we saw and then also the reduction and hopefully that will contribute to a lower bill. So, thank you. And I appreciate your whole team.
I have another question for you. Thank you much, you know, wanted to ask, we've got several people here on. With the investment of this, we're getting, what was, you said 5 million what?
5,840,000 will be available for the building projects.
Okay. I was reading through the docs and there's a paragraph in there about investment. This is paraphrasing, but we're essentially free to invest in how the city sees it. Are we able to put that into CDs, into local entities or local banks?
Yeah. Yeah, the, there are restrictions in the statutes as to how you can invest the money, but that would be one of the eligible investments would be CDs. There's also another alternative is the state's municipal investment pool. So there's a variety of places that you can park the money. Now, we talked a little bit about that today and some discussions that I guess staff has ongoing with the banks about CDs and collateral and that kind of stuff.
Okay. The reason I was asking is I've looked at local interest rates and UPTRMR has, I think it's 278 for one-year interest rate on their current CD for one year or above. And I'm just curious how we go about looking into that because we're supposed to get the money, or essentially I should ask, when do we get the money?
Closed date scheduled for the 5th of June, I believe. So that's when you'll get the, yeah, you'll get all the money by the 5th of June.
Would we build, I guess like everyone, the technical or the accounting term is like rainfall it or like three, six month money?
Yeah, part of the money, the money that's going to pay off the old bonds, the old bonds are going to be called on September 1st. So all of that money is, it needs to go into an account that will be available on September 1st. The other money that's for the building projects, yeah, that's, you could ladder some CDs if you wanted to or, and I probably turned to Tilly and asked her about the practice on how they would invest money. But one thing we are doing is, I talked to, Sean and I talked a little bit during the meeting, they're going to request from the construction managers that anticipate a draw schedule for the building projects.
So we have longer used our own funds?
Yeah, so if it shows that, you know, you're only going to need $2 million for these first six months, then you can take the balance of it and invest it out a little bit longer to try to be a little bit better rate return.
Yeah, awesome. All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else to add? Staff? Seeing none, I entertain a motion. We don't need to change the amount.
We keep the amount at the 9, 9320. No, it's 9,9320.
So Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance to authorize the issuance of general obligation bond series 2019-A in the approximate amount of $9,320,000.
Exactly. Moving seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We're on this page. Seeing none, no more. Have a motion, uh, vote please.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Onto item number, yeah, item number four, a resolution to prescribe the form in details and authorize the delivery of GO bond series 2019 in the approximate amount of $9,320,000. Anything to add, staff-wise? No? I entertain a motion. Oh, citizens? No. I entertain a motion. Yes, please.
Really quickly again, just note the action item in your package is 9980. The action is the 99320.
9320. 9320. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution to prescribe the form in details and authorize the delivery of GO bond series 2019-A in the approximate amount of $9,320,000. That's it.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comment? We'll start down here with the senators. No?
No more.
No.
Nothing?
Let's go, go.
Yeah, vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Thank you all very much. I believe this is the largest bond that Barns Springs has ever been.
Yeah, I'd have to look, I think it probably might be.
Might be, might be, yeah. Anyway, thank you all very much, whole team. Onto item number five, which is SFF, SFF architectural amendment number two. Yes. Staff.
Quickly, you have attached in the agenda amendment two, which covers the additional services beyond phase one portion of the project. This includes bidding services, which have already been completed, and then construction administration services related to both the police station and city hall buildings. There's also some additional costs or services that were rendered during the construction or excuse me, the design phase of the project. Those are listed. Fire alarm work as well as some additional sidewalk work around the community center. Dan Gold with SFF Architecture, it's hard to say what, is also here. Any specific questions related to the amendment? But again, this is for the project that you just have GO bonds issued for, looking for approval of this amendment.
Thank you. Anything to add? Very good. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to recommend approval amendment number two to the agreement for the architectural services between the City of Barns Springs, Kansas and the SFF Architectural Incorporated.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments?
You should be giving your hard time. I was going to let it just ride.
No additional.
Anything? No? Seeing none, vote please.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you for coming tonight. Our present location kind of underlines the, how important this is to us, so thank you. Moving along to item number six, our charter ordinance number 36. Very good, side of staff.
Charter ordinance number 36 repeals charter ordinance number eight, which was passed in 1980 something, I think it was, and then repealed later by an ordinance, which isn't appropriate, has to be approved by a charter ordinance. Since then, we have handled these items through policy, so charter ordinance number six would repeal charter ordinance number eight, ordinance 1070, and ordinance 1202, and one plus will be added.
Thank you very much. Anything to add by the other staff? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve charter ordinance number 36.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? We'll start over here.
What exactly is this doing?
It's repealing, or it's-
What was the purchasing, did we have a procedure for purchasing equipment, but were we not doing it now?
Basically what we're doing is we're correcting some repealing. The initial charter ordinance, I believe it was eight correct, was passed and established a procedure to purchase equipment through GO debt is what it amounted to. Laws changed in the state of Kansas and the city passed a repealing ordinance, not a charter ordinance. And then there, I think there was another ordinance that was passed, again, that was that 1202. So this is just an effort to clean up our charter ordinances to be what they were intended to be all along. If you recall, we talked a few times meetings ago about just trying to better our purchasing procedures and processes. So with that review, this was found. So again, this is just cleaning up, I think, a little bit of an issue that we have.
Thank you. And that was my question. This was, this clarification was more or less housekeeping that you found in your working up the new current policy? And that will be administrative policy that you'll follow now, not an ordinance or resolution?
Yes, we're currently in the process. It's been reviewed by department heads to get a policy that I think is professional as well as empowering to the employees and department heads to have some level of discretion when making purchases for the city.
Very good. And we won't have to approve that, but you'll educate us on that policy when you-
Absolutely. And if it is council's prerogative, we can certainly bring that back as a governing body policy as well. It's entirely up to you. Well, right now, the purchasing policy that the city has in place has never been approved by the city council. That's not to say it's good or bad or indifferent. It's just about trying to follow suit with what we've done in the past here a little bit, being more transparent.
Thank you very much. Anything? Sir? Nothing else? Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wow. Onto our reports for this evening, city manager's report.
Really quickly, as I pulled up on my phone, obviously evidenced by the fact that we're here, city hall offices have been closed permanently. This comes as a result of some substantial water damage. I've included pictures in the city manager report just to help convey, I think, the situation that the city have been dealing with for a number of years, decades to be forthright on that.
The pictures come to address the city.
No. If there was some division included, I would have tried to do that. Again, it's unfortunate and I just like to thank the community for their patience that has been trying to get everything up and running. I will say, as of today, we have been without phones now for two weeks, three weeks. We do have a working phone line, so if you do call the main city line, that is working now. We are working on direct numbers. Again, that was as a result of water damage in the city's electrical utility closet that caused that to happen. And at the urging of individuals that handle our phone system, they again urge us to turn the power off on those phones, which that phone system is a several decades old. So the ability for us to forward lines and to do common things that most people do was not something that we're able to do, so.
And is the new system in place now?
Yes, so we, fortunately, we were in the process of moving to voice of the line key, so that is, we're just doing that now. And that is going very, very well. Again, it's just a question of working with AT&amp;T to port the lines to different directions. So again, that's hopefully coming to a finality here fairly quickly, so you can call direct lines. So again, if anybody does need to make contact, city hall, the main office line is working. I also included, the mayor discussed this at a previous council meeting, but a project that is being looked at in Levelford County for a special use permit involving Col Valley sand, a lot of the application materials I had provided to me, so I included that in my report again for you all in the public to kind of understand what this project means as far as traffic on Cape 32, as well as Maurey Road in Barns Springs. And then lastly, I just want to note that city offices will be closed on Memorial Day. That does push back trash and that does push back the next city council meeting, which we held on that Tuesday. With that, happy to answer any questions.
We'll go ahead and move right into city council items and start over here, sir.
Sean, just a quick, and I realize that the difficulty of trying to get as much information out to the public, because we are limited, you know, without a local newspaper, et cetera. What has been the reception so far that you've been made aware of with people coming in other than being a little bit inconvenient and?
As far as the relocation of city hall.
Yeah.
You know, for the most part, I think people have been fairly accepting to the situation. Naturally, there's instances where people are a bit niffed. But again, the reason for it was strictly safety and health of the employees, as well as finding a suitable location, given the functionality of all that the city does. So again, we're fortunate to have this building and some spaces where we can utilize with our technology, our servers, documents that we have to maintain, things like that. So generally speaking, I think most people have been fairly receptive to the fact that this had to happen.
No further questions.
I have been impressed when I came in to this building. Every question I had was answered and I was directed to places. The fact that everybody is doing with cubicles in the back room and smiling, I have been impressed with that. Yeah.
Were we able to find adequate storage for everything that has to come out of the old building? Are we going to have direct storage?
I think we're going to be fine here. We've moved some tables and chairs out of this building in place of its South Park. But for the most part, we're able to make do. We do have one staff employee that is located down at Public Works, I mean, TIBLO Transit or dispatcher. So we are running TIBLO Transit for the most part out of Public Works. But beyond that, we've found that there's space here for most of the stuff. I will say there are things that we still are working to get out of city hall, non-essential items, I guess I would call it, but again, items that we do need to retain for public retention services.
Thanks, sir. We should use the staff's willingness to work on top of each other if we miss here.
I know you had a lot, obviously, going on. I emailed you about Bill Storms and that, I don't even know if you, that had a put on the back burner or what, but I think he's expecting a callback from me, so. Lasted, he called you directly.
Yeah, I think I responded back to you regarding the-
Yeah. And handlers.
Yep, and then as far as parking, there is no stop sign. Kansas Avenue, approximately 134th Street, there are no parking signs posted on each side of the street. So I think my, I went out there personally, drove the area, there still are no parking signs all the way down Kansas Avenue, east and west. I just think the spacing may have changed at one point in time. So again, there, there's space appropriately and they're there currently.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
When it comes to the special use permit for the Santa Coria View, either Mr. Mayor or Sean, have you heard if they've scheduled it for me?
I believe it is June, I want to say it's 12, I believe. I know I did contact Levelford County to verify that, the data's escaping me, but I know they pushed it back to their- I know they pushed it back to their first meeting in June, which I believe is the twelfth.
So are we going to be expressing our concern with the increased traffic and the, perhaps the concerns that we'd have on our roads?
I, what I can tell you, I've done at this point is I've let the unified government know about the impact on Loring. Just to refresh everybody's memory, Loring is a street that is considered a county road. Yes, there are still, in fact, county roads. It is part of the Leavenworth, or, excuse me, the Loring service area, so we are contracted to work to maintain that area. So I did let Jeff Fisher, their executive director of Public Works, know about that. But as far as any direction that you guys, I would look for you guys, if you want to send anything to Leavenworth County Planning Commission, that would ultimately, I think, need to come.
Individually or as a council?
That's entirely up to you all.
I wouldn't mind putting some together and have it at the next council.
Because they have a choice of routes.
Well, if you go through that thing, that's the thing, is the two routes that the, who did the study, Traffic City, took no regard for population, for road conditions. It was all about what was going to be beneficial for their trucking company, least amount of miles. And it was Route one and Route four. Route one puts it going up one hundred and forty-second street. That road is not built.
So the irony went in.
Yeah, especially if you're running the five axle, which I think I looked it up, and they're eighty, forty tons, eight thousand pounds. That's a lot of weight on that road.
That's a heck of a lot of blocks going on thirty-two. I mean.
All right. What is our, what control, or what, what do we have?
I think if you guys would like for us to formulate a letter of sorts, we can put that together and have it on the next council meeting without knowing the dates, just really quickly.
If their meeting's not till June, we could do it at the second.
So we, I can put something together and then have you guys approve that, and it can come from you or work with the mayor to put that together. And then again, if that's what you all would like to do.
Because it sounds like there's concerns about traffic volume, wake on our city streets, and I don't know what we, what our capacity is, but like you made an example of one hundred and forty-second as well as shot lane. Those are.
Let's face reality, if you look at that, we've all been in this business for long enough, you know you're gonna put numbers that look, make it look good, and when they go, we reduce it down to about fifteen trucks an hour, but do the math, that is thirty-one thousand loads, you know, every year. Sixty-two thousand trips. That's a lot of traffic.
So there, there are other routes, ones that take them around Bonner Springs or not through residential areas, which all of them in Bonner Springs would take them through residential areas. And one hundred and fifty-eighth all the way north to twenty-four forty, and twenty-four forty all the way east to, what road is that? The ninety-eight or ninety-four, somewhere in there? Or, or four thirty-five down to Wood.
Yeah.
So there's, there's roads that are rated with capacity much higher than.
Well, what's interesting is there was one route that was actually only a mile longer, mile and a half longer than what Route one and what Route four is, and is if it goes south, catch eighty-third street runs over to K seven, which is belt four, and that kind of traffic, showing Mr. Parkway, which again is built for those type of loads, four thirty-five, which is built for those loads.
Thirty, thirty-three is though, isn't it?
Eighty-third street is not a four lane, but it is a much, much improved, yeah, it's an improved road.
Through residential area, but not.
Again, it was different.
They could go north to one hundred, on one hundred and fifty-eighth or one hundred and sixty-six, all the way through State Avenue.
Well, we could also legislate or make an ordinance for each road only have X, Y, Z weighted truck.
You're getting into a lot of state statutes with state highway K seven, or K thirty-two is a state highway, and I don't know what our ability to control that is. They may state, yes, you're right, absolutely, we're gonna come right down these public drugs.
I think it's just better to express our concerns.
Yeah.
I do know just that this is a concern that's also at least shared with individuals over in Edwardsville as well.
Yeah. When it said, I read fifteen to twenty truck, and then I read per hour, and I went, oh.
That's when you start doing the math, isn't it?
Yeah, that is frightening.
Well, we have to stay within our authority, and we want to be appropriate in those regards also and not restrict public use, but look out for the assets that are under our jurisdiction. So I'll work with Sean, and we'll get a letter that we'll bring back next meeting and hopefully provide that to Leavenworth County planning. I think it's where this next meeting is.
And then, yes, the point was just a handy coincidence. On a lighter note, how's the power doing in the building? Because I know you were without power, without lights.
We did have, it was actually a few weeks ago, a transformer, actually, I think it's been a month or two ago, a transformer did below in the alleyway between Community Garden and this building. So that was, again, the case last week, where the power went down, there was a transformer blue, and that is, I think we finally got that correct about one or two o'clock that day, so.
But now, anything?
What in the day?
Yeah.
Sorry, I missed it.
Very good. For the mayor's report this evening, I would really like to show my appreciation to all the city staff and administration on this move. During this process, it was, it was a situation down at city hall that I couldn't imagine having any of my own employees working in, let alone city employees. So it, I'm glad that we were able to accommodate them with another Plan B. Bonner Springs doesn't stand for that, the B in Bonner doesn't stand for Plan B, but we have had other facilities that had to be moved out of, and we are so fortunate here in Bonner Springs that we can accommodate that. So I'm very appreciative, and the spirit of cooperation with the Parks and Rec Department is certainly not going to be unnoticed by me. They are wonderful to have as a part of our team. So thank you all very much. I appreciate it. I think it's, shows how much it's needed. In nineteen seventy-four, the master plan showed that we needed to consider a new city hall. That city hall started in, I think, parts of it were predate nineteen fifty, so it's been added on to, and I challenge not only this city council, but future city councils to be more appropriate with our planning and long-term use of our facilities. We need to invest in these facilities. Water and wastewater just happens to be in front of us tonight, but with our fire department, after the police move out of that, we'll have to respect that area and certainly improve it again, as well as Parks and Rec are going to need some additional assistance with this community center after the next phase comes online. So it's, it's something that the City of Bonner Springs hasn't done in the past, and we need to change that and address these things professionally, and our current administration is helping us do that. So we're moving in that direction, so it's, it's gonna, it, it costs money, and that's, we gotta recognize that. I, a couple suggestions. I would remove the signage from the old building and maybe get a big, big banner, as big as legally possible. We have regulations, we have. But then put it on the side, the side with an arrow or something, city hall relocated to three hundred. There's a, a lot of people still are recognizing that for the first time. Please help educate the community without a newspaper. Like you said, it's very hard. I had someone say, well, couldn't we just put a tarp over it? And it's, it just floored me to, they, they just don't have appreciation for how bad it was. So if we can help the community with recognizing how bad it was, that, I think that's how we can best, best assist them. It would take, it would have taken a tarp the size of city hall. Yeah. So other than that, some of the fun things that I got to do, I participated in proclamation for the Wanda County Mental Health Services and joined with Edwardsville and the Unified Government for a proclamation for children's mental health awareness and mental health month. We gave that out this last week. Also to recognize Rise and Shine, which is the Bonner Springs Edwardsville USD two oh four education foundation spring event. And it, that's a group that does a lot of wonderful work and is, one of the main charges is to provide scholarships for high school seniors. And this year, I think they've given away, or are in the process of giving away thirty-five thousand dollars worth of scholarships, not only to colleges and junior colleges, but also to technical education as well. And so that's a new aspect of their charge. So if you would like to have an opportunity to go to that spring event, there's information right here. The night payment box, are you moving that up here, or?
We are currently thinking about that. Trying to figure out a way to accommodate for that, I guess. No news yet.
No news at the present, very good. It's a good idea. Don't forget that. I would imagine that whole area will be very useful in mobilizing the new construction.
It's my understanding of that will have a positive impact, both on the timeframe of the project as well as the cost, because we're not able to globalize multiple times. So again, a silver lining to all of that is that there will be a benefit to the city.
Very good.
So we're gonna have a wrecking ball party soon.
Yeah, gold flag, Amber.
Gold flag, Amber.
There you go.
I have nothing else, and don't want to delay our continued workshop, so unless anybody has a question for me.
Quickly.
Yes, please.
You were mentioning about the banner. Have we, I know you like to pass stuff on the signboard on Leavenworth, have we put it up on the signboard about city hall? Having closed.
Good idea.
We also have a little sign maker. I have a, I think, something, there are a couple names, but they're kind of like across the street.
Oh, I was gonna say, are they sitting here? I didn't see them.
Midwest. Was it Midwest, I suppose, since you wanted?
I have one question about the Speedway or Stellbommerland. Have you heard anything more on that?
Other than that, there is a planning commission meeting, I believe, next, next week, so that will be heard at that point in time as far as, I can't remember the particular center being, but the next planning commission will be discussed.
And then it will be brought forward after following?
The items meeting, council actually be brought forward, I believe, on the twenty-eighth. That's just, hold me through that, because I'm not sure off the top of my head, but whatever the timeframe is.
There has been, that was.
Yeah, because I was looking here, and it's, the preliminary plat's been, had, getting the talk. Preliminary plat has been approved, but the special use permit rezoning and variance request are pending. Now, are all three of those, do you know, the, coming before the P and Z or the?
The rezoning, the special use and the preliminary.
Yes, those three would be the ones. Yeah, the special use, rezoning, and then the, there's a variance request. So those three require public hearing.
Very good. And then? I don't think we adjourn. We'll go right straight back into the workshop, and then do we adjourn after the workshop?
I think you adjourn this meeting.
Because we're not going to do anything on that?
Right.
We're gonna do that next meeting. Okay, then we're adjourned? And we'll go right ahead?